Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the November meeting of the Town Account Planning Board. Can we all stand for the pledge, please?
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Just one thing, just want to welcome Rich back to the board. And I think we can go ahead. Anybody else have anything before we go ahead? No? Okay. Right, first is on is Lakeside Bible Conference Center.
Jamie Legudis from Inside Engineering Surveying and Landscape Architecture. So we're here before you to address a couple violations that have come before the property for the non-for-profit camp located at 250 Ninham Road. They had essentially given, were given the opportunity to receive fill from a local contractor, which had been working on a DPW, the County DPW project on Fair Street, as everyone's aware of that traffic that continuously is going on. As part of that, there was a stormwater basin that was constructed in the woods, we believe it's just behind the wind water, from a wind water, and basically it's soil from there that was brought here and placed. We do have some information about that fill that was brought in, but essentially they, the area was graded out and provided a stable area, flat area, for them to use their wood storage. And, you know, stop work order was issued. They basically stabilized the site, it is fully stabilized now. As part of this violation, they are proposing some wetland mitigation. It's just downhill of that, and I believe that we are in the processes of that right now. So we have received some comments, we have addressed the majority of them. We realize that we don't want to do necessarily testing before we had come before the board, so we are waiting for that. I guess, is there anything else that you really need to look at for this? Do we want to get into comments that we received? Because I can show you some pictures of where we are now as well.
There's a lot of grass, maybe not like grass right now, with the way we go, the weather has turned, but it is stable. There's one, she jumped in.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Barber, I'm the Town's Environmental Planning Consultant. Bill Walters, John and myself had been out to the site earlier this year, and as Jamie indicated, there was a substantial amount of fill that was introduced to the site. The approximate amount, given what the applicant has provided is about 2,000 cubic yards. There is a variable depth to the fill, up to, I think, John, about 16 feet or so. So as is the custom at this board, in all occasions with fill being brought to a site from outside that site, the soil will require testing. The first step is to determine what kind of testing. That would be New York State DEC unrestricted residential standards, because it is a camp. We understand that it's a wood storage area, but there's a potentiality for children to come there and play, so that would be what we recommend to test the standards, too. The second is that there's typically a testing matrix or map showing where the test holes will be accomplished on the site, the depth of the test holes, and methodology, and I'll let John talk to that more than I will. And so really where we are right now is it's our understanding that the site has been stabilized, there's grass growing, and that's a great thing to keep it in place. John and I need to go out and do a site inspection to, A, confirm that, but also I need to go out and look at the wetland delineation that was conducted recently, and then be able to evaluate the wetland mitigation accordingly. So right now, what we're looking for is a testing protocol, map, and plan, and an opportunity for John and I to go out and have a look at the site.
I don't want to repeat some things, but this project was before you last in January, believe it or not. And it appears from the record that they took the advice that we gave them, and they did make an effort to stabilize the site, they did put in silt fence, they did a few other things. And it, basically, from what we can tell on the recent submittal, that the fill was placed in a wetland buffer, and when the, at the time it was placed, the quantity and aerial extent would have required a permit. If you look at now, according to what their engineer is telling us, it meets the definition of final stabilization, so they don't, may not need a coverage under the speedies permit. They may need a town wetland permit and a town erosion control permit for the mitigation area, which is a much smaller area, about 3,600 square feet at the toe of this, where it kind of meets the adjacent wetlands, and they're proposing to replant it, redevelop it, and, you know, kind of make a transition zone. We don't have a problem with that in concept, but as Bruce said, one of the first things we want to do is go out there and verify that it is, in fact, stabilized under the terms of the permit, and that this may be reduced. And Bruce touched on testing. We've had this discussion before. If the site's stable, and it's 16-foot of fill, technically you need to test the entire depth. None of us sitting here wants to get a backhoe and gut that site again down to 16-foot. So what I had suggested to Jamie is that perhaps they would be interested in developing a protocol where they used a small two-inch split spoon sampler to possibly a minimum of three locations along the fill, and I care not whether they go this way or longitudinally with the fill, whatever works best for them, and take some samples at multiple levels. It's less destructive, you end up with about a three-inch hole in the ground, it's easy to fill back in, but it would allow them to sample the various fill levels and get down to natural soil, because we need to see what's happening on natural soil. So we would like to see a, basically, a test protocol and a conceptual test plan from them to achieve that. They may not need a SWIP, they may need some of their, they've got to change some of their drawings, because everything is labeled "proposed," and if it's really stabilized, it's no longer proposed, it's existing. So just some technical stuff, but I think the good news is, our intent was to get it to be stable. It appears to be stable. The last big open issue is, does the mitigation make sense? And I think, Bruce, we need our site visit to make sure that that's the right spot. And two, we need a sampling protocol from the applicant.
Okay.
Unless the board has anything else.
Just to be clear, what the testing protocols, again, to reiterate, would be, number one would be some type of-
Bruce, could you speak up for my sake, please?
Oh, absolutely.
What?
Thank you, Jackie. Testing protocol, number one is the site plan as you see it with a location of the test holes. Three would be adequate, according to what John and I are looking at. They need to be on the map showing those, a location of test holes. Number two, the methodology, which would be a split spoon type of methodology, going down to virgin soil and taking samples up as grab samples. Number three would be taking those samples to a New York State certified laboratory for testing for unrestricted residential standards. So that's what we're looking for, for the applicant to provide to you to continue to move this forward. In the meantime, we'll go out and have a look, make sure it's stable, which I certainly expect it to be, and we'll have a look at the wetland and the wetland buffer as well. Any questions?
No.
Jamie?
So, of course, I'd like to ask if we could not do that, for reasons that I will disclose. So given that we know where the soil came from, it is from a wooded area, it is soil, it is legit soil, if, would the board be amicable to us providing a certification letter or something stating where the fill came from, and anything to that effect, to not have to do the testing? Because testing in the, for, just as a cost purpose, is, you know, a couple thousand dollars that would have to happen to get a machine to be able to do it, and then to send the testing out to a lab to have that portion done.
Well, it's been previously with, with other sites that this has happened on, they've done test sampling. We've asked them to do it, and they've done it, because they have no chain of command letter that come with it. So you're saying you do have a chain of command?
If we can provide that, is that something the board would be open to?
I don't know. The only way that that would be considered, and it's been done other places, is that we had a test where it was originally-
Taken from?
Taken from. It said it was clean to begin with, and then we had a chain of custody. If you remember, there's actually one, everyone taught that we're going to go out and visit Long Jinnati. They had their contractor submit samples from the site, and then a certified trucking tally of going directly from the site to the site. So that's the only case we've excused sampling. So if they sampled it in the original location, Jamie, we consider it.
But the other risk that you run, of course, is that you can't really verify that all that soil at that time came from that one site. There was no monitor saying these trucks are all coming from the same spot. So it's plausible that a lot of it did come from that site that Jamie's alluding to, but there's no real definitive answer that it did or didn't.
Simon, if the site is essentially stable now, right, what would we even do from the testing results?
Well, the testing results-
Why test?
Well, as I said, it's for, obviously, it's a camp, so if there's anything in the soil that we shouldn't be in the soil, we'd need to know about it, because if you were bringing it in to the site, like-
What remedy would we possibly ask them to do if it's stable now?
Well, it depends what's in it. It all depends what's in it. Like, we had one that there was arsenic in it, I believe, if my memory is totally right, and then they would have to remove it. It all depends.
There are protocols that you would follow. There have been certain cases where we detected contaminants. We've asked them to remove the soil, they remove it, and do a new test of clean soil. There are other cases where we've had to remove the fill in its entirety and start over. Depending upon what was found, we might entertain something lesser, but absent any data, it's difficult to determine.
But one thing the board can consider and approve to pass to is capturing that soil with a layer of material that was approved in terms of depth and hyper material per DEC. So that's something that's very common to do, a dust of a layer of soil on top of that, capturing that, which is no longer happening. The other thing, again, to attack this question, is that, of course, there is some well water. You start to get an idea and concern that if there are contaminants in there, we'll be a leaky, which is why I wrote this mission as well.
And again, it's not like we're talking a foot here, 16 feet. So, is everybody? I personally think it should be tested, because we've asked, we've said that-
I'm not inclined to accept anything less than a test.
Yeah. I don't know of anybody else.
We will prepare a testing, we will prepare a testing plan. We would like to schedule a site visit, so that you can come out and take a look at that.
We're working on that, we'll be in touch with you.
Sounds good.
We're trying to get out there next week, so we'll let you know.
That would be great. Would the board entertain passing this to administrative, so that we wouldn't have to come back before you again if testing plans were understood?
I would like to see the test results, that's the one thing I would like to see. That's me personally, I don't know of anybody else.
Agreed.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jamie Legudis from Inside Engineering Surveying and Landscape Architecture, here on behalf of the Kibbutz Carmel application. So we, last before you, we had a sketch plan application. We've provided you a preliminary application with a bunch more information for you to digest. We realize there are more wetland mitigation plantings and information that we owe you. We wanted to get through the process of meeting Bruce on site to verify the wetlands and water course areas, which we did do this week in the snow, Simon. But I believe we are in a good spot there. There is a small wetland area that we need to add to our mapping. This is a small area that next to this is this big army for wetland here. So other than, other than the wetland itself, there is a whole big difference from what we had previously provided, which is, which is great. So we have, again, provided more detail as far as erosion controls, we've provided security curtains, we have also advanced the plan sets themselves. We had submitted the JD, so I submitted that to you guys as well, that is not, there is no jurisdictional wetlands on site from the DEC. We are in the processes of advancing the Health Department and DEP submissions, so those will be forthcoming. And we have also submitted to SHPO, so we are awaiting that correspondence back from them. We were in receipt of the comment memos from both Bruce and John, and we will be addressing those within the next mission.
You don't mind me having that out today?
Oh, no, it's okay, thank you. I did choose it.
So I did issue a memo today, folks? And as Jamie said, we kind of held this pending Bruce's wetland determination. He did do that, he advised us that it was, you know, it's a small wetland addition. There's a bunch of little details. There's things that need to be addressed. For instance, there are three existing wells in the site. They are planning on abandoning two, drilling a new one, but they don't tell me what they're doing with the third. So the third is just hanging out there, I don't know whether it's connected to anything. The other thing is, it's not clear, there, I think as you will recall, they're relocating the septic system. They're moving it out of any wetland buffer, any wetland area, and moving it to an appropriate location on the site. And, but it's not clear who's getting that water in the sewer. It seems like it's just the residential units, but they have some things labeled like a car storage area, they have a barn, they have some other things. It's not clear whether they're getting any water or sewer facilities, and that needs to be kind of straightened up. They do a rather detailed limits of disturbance, but this is an interesting project, because they put the limits of disturbance on the erosion control plan, which shows a lot of the work to be, the new work, the proposed improvements. But there's a lot of demolition that's associated with this. And demolition is what typically creates problems, as things are being demolished and people are loading out wood and debris. So I would like to see them spend a little more time and put the limits of disturbance on the removals plan as well. So it gives the contractor a notice that he just can't, yilly-nilly, he's got to stay within his proposed limits as well. There are a couple things that just need some additional details. They promised us things in the future, as Jamie indicated, they will come, and we need those. The, there are a number of locations where the silt fence is outside the limits of disturbance, technically speaking, the silt fence should be inside the limits of disturbance, and define those limits. There's some information missing. For instance, they're proposing a really nice set of basketball courts, and it's kind of up and around the lake, but they don't give me a path to get from the residential side up to those courts. So we need to see that, because it's right along the top of the lake, so we need to see what's going on there. And, but other than that, it's mostly dotting i's and crossing t's, but they're big i's and big t's, if you understand what I'm trying to say. So we do need a bunch more information. As Jamie indicated, they did do a mitigation set of plans, the last two plans in the set, where they kind of went through a hierarchy of what they were proposing, avoidance, mitigation, you know, a few other things. And they're, they're kind of shown, but they're, and I don't, this is not meant to be disparaging, but they're kind of, at this level, a little bit cartoonish now, and I think they need to be expanded, and they need to be fleshed out, so that Bruce and I understand what they're truly proposing. And again, I wasn't, I wasn't attempting to downplay them, it's a great concept to start, but we need to see how it's going to be finished in a way.
Actually, that came to mind as we were discussing this. So while we were on site during a couple visits, we were discussing the proposed pool. And I know that was a concept that needed some attention based on our last meeting. So we have reviewed this with, with ownership, and we did want to let the board know that we are amicable in shrinking the pool, moving it closer out of the wetland itself, and being able to propose more mitigation and restoration in that wetland. So I think that's going to be a benefit for a lot of reasons, which will be great. Yes?
We did go out on Tuesday, and we completed the wetland delineation. It was snowing and very cold. But nonetheless, there's a few changes to be made to the wetland map. We're going to be getting that over to Jamie's office, so they can bring that into this map, incorporate that, and have a final wetland map and final wetland buffer. Just to remind the board, I'll just go over what the application in general is. It's to demolish two existing residential dwellings, several single-story buildings totaling seven total buildings, construct a new residential dwelling, new garage, a gym, a pool, and other site amenities. The gravel driveway will be reconfigured, a new septic system will be installed, there shall be landscaping, wetland mitigation plantings, and stormwater management as well. Right now, based upon this map, there's a total of 5,695 square feet of wetland intrusion and 43,705 square feet of wetland buffer to be disturbed. As John said, you know, this is coming along, we all know that this is working through concept and sketch and what have you. I'll just give you a couple of the major memos. As Jamie indicated, the DEC has weighed in with the jurisdictional determination, there are no jurisdictional wetlands, as the DEC is concerned, on this particular property. They are contacted with the EP, sometimes the EP will have their own idea of what wetlands are compared to DEC, and I believe Jamie had indicated in their memo they're in contact with them. The mitigation that's been put together, first of all, I'm very pleased to see somebody going through avoidance, minimization, and mitigation. I certainly believe that will be fleshed out as we go further into the project, but the first effort is certainly laudable. Couple of things come to mind, the applicant itself is Kibbutz Carmel, the signatory on the application is Mr. Hugh Evans. So we're just asking for the corporation or whatever entity is going to apply to ensure that Mr. Evans has standing or the ability to apply for this application. I'm sure that's just a detail, but we would need that, as we do in every case. Other than that, talked about the, the Department of Health approval is pending for the well and septic system. One of the things we're looking to find out a little bit more about is potential blasting, as folks have been out to the site, there's a lot of rock out there, a lot of ledge out there. The new building going in and what have you, I understand it probably is going to be on a slab, but there will be a need for foundations to go down to frost, or to be pinned on a rock. So we just want to make sure there's not going to be a lot of blasting and kind of cross that t as well. There are also, as John had indicated, a full SWIP, or at least some type of SWIP will be, needed to be included. There's about two acres of disturbance presently anticipated, and really, that's about, I think, and a lot of odds and ends, it's moving along nicely, I anticipate we'll get more information for the December meeting and continue on with this. Any questions?
No.
Did you get these, Jamie, today?
You did, I did.
Okay.
Thank you.
You bet.
And then also another update, things come to mind as we're discussing. We did do soil testing with the DEP and the Health Department, so we do have that, and we'll be able to share that with the next submission, and then prepare also the, or finalize the SWIP as well. As part of that review, the DEP will be coming back out to look at water courses. So we'll have that for you as the next mission as well. So with, given that we have, we do have a lot of dot your i's and cross your t's items, would the board be amicable to potentially setting a public hearing?
I think it's a bit early. Personally, I think it's a little early.
Okay.
I don't know, but anybody else?
Yeah, it's too early.
I just think it's a tad bit early on this one.
I would say no.
Given that the majority of our work pertains to, the remaining work that we owe you pertains to the mitigation plantings and those plans and the SWIP, the others being fairly minor, we, we feel we can get you that by the next submission for the next meeting, which is why I'd be asking for the public hearing to be scheduled.
We don't have to close the public hearing, we can get it open, leave it open, is that correct?
Just-
I don't see any harm in actually giving them, gives people more time to say what they want to say.
Sure.
Whatever is, that's what I'm saying, you know? Could backfire as well.
I'm hoping not, but-
Well, I think if one year later, a new date for the next meeting, Chris?
No, it's okay. I have it here.
Last time you said, you did expect it to backfire, you sent Eric and blew up the system.
I will be here.
It should be. I think it's December 11th, is it?
Yeah, next meeting is on the 11th.
I think it's like-
The 20th, November 20th, the submission.
It's next Thursday.
So I'm Xavier Scanlon, I'm project manager, interior designer, and agent for the owners of the property. So appreciate everything, and we met on site as well. We'd appreciate it if we could have the public hearing, because there are a lot of things that were put in the comments that we have already submitted that we'll follow up with in writing. So Hugh Evans is part of the ownership in a couple of other comments, and we've been working really hard to expeditional, you know, involve as much information and comments back and move really quickly. And with the meeting that was rescheduled, the cadence of feedback and implementation, we're trying to catch up on that, and we feel like we are, so we would appreciate it if we could get these comments through as quickly and get that hearing done as soon as possible. That's all. I appreciate, it's up to you, but I just wanted to-
Thank you.
Say from my perspective.
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
So what does everybody think?
I'm in favor of opening the meeting.
Well, setting.
Setting.
You, most will start at that end, see consensus on this.
Could backfire, but why not?
If we open the public hearing, and everyone shows up, and they're not ready, like, have we just wasted everyone's time?
We would just adjourn to the next meeting.
Yeah, you can keep the public hearing open until you feel you have sufficient information.
But we're asking the public to come and comment, but it may not be ready?
If that's the case, the board could open the public hearing and require the applicant,
if there are significant changes, to re-notice the neighbors. I mean, there's, there's options.
I don't know that we would need to re-notice it. If the public hearing were closed, yes, but if we were to leave it open-
Well, I'm, all I'm saying is that if there are significant changes, while the public hearing is open, and the board feels like it needs to be brought to the neighbor's attention specifically again, they could ask that you just send another letter informing them.
That's true.
You don't often, you don't often hear me say this. I care not one way or the other whether you schedule a public hearing. However, the, the, the general gauge is, is there sufficient information in the application and the supporting documentation that exists for the public to take a fair look at and generate comments? While we would like to see more information, I, I think what's on paper is sufficient to allow you to schedule and open a public hearing. Once you get public comment and you've experienced it before, sometimes you'll get no comment. It'll be crickets and then you're justified. Other times you'll get a lot. I would suspect, because this is tucked away in the middle of nowhere, you might not get a big hue and cry. But having said all that, you have enough fail safes. You can adjourn the public hearing to a date certain. You can do any number of things that, as you wish to facilitate public review. But I would think between Bruce's memo, my memo, and what you've got, the public can take a pretty fair whack at this.
So one of the substantial elements that's been discussed amongst the consultants and the board is this pool, which was, it's an older pool, maybe about that much of the pool still shows above grade. And it's in an area of a wetland. And we discussed this at, on the site and I'm hoping, without putting on the spot, if you can just give us an idea of where the pool might be and the size based upon the map you have here. So just in general.
Well, in general, the pool, the existing pool is located right here. The proposal would be to remove the lake, obviously here. Get rid of that and shrink the pool down so that we almost keep cutting it in half. And then taking this rectangular pool and shifting it forward as we talk about the heels so that it would be, would leave us more room to basically mitigate and restore the wetland behind it.
And we're leaving, what we said, about 12 foot in the front between the lake and the pool just for access to the.
We had discussed about having roughly a 12-foot span which means that you could drive a vehicle and not get near it.
All right, so you can go up to the tennis courts.
I was under the impression that this, this pool was like in the cattails, in the weeds.
It is.
It is.
So by moving it that little bit, is that really going to make, change anything?
It actually does.
They were proposing to restore the whole pool and put a patio behind it. They were blowing out the whole thing.
Right, right.
What they're proposing now seems reasonable and logical. They're taking the least, they're taking the edge basically and kind of splitting the difference. I, I defer to Bruce, but it makes sense at this level. We'll have to see how it develops and what it does in the back of the.
I think there's a really good opportunity here based on the invasive species that are in that wetland to pull those out, to really restore the wetland back to a functional wetland that can mitigate all the stormwater.
Maybe some pictures for us people that haven't been out to see this either.
Gene, Gene Carlyle, your assessment is right. It's basically all phragmites, invasive species, those tall reeds we see in that area. It's symptomatic, it's got a lot of disturbance in its past there. So there's an opportunity to remove those over time. It doesn't just happen overnight, it's a sequence of events and, and years actually to remove those and create a more functional wetland. We talked on the site about what Jamie's alluding to is bringing the pool out closer to the lake but still maintaining access along the lake's edge for, for people and also to get up to the septic and the basketball court if maintenance is needed. And so I'm looking forward to seeing a little bit more refined plan, but this is in the direction of comment of the compromise of saying, well, the pool can move a little bit out this way. We can restore the wetlands properly without it being really, really expanded into that location is, is what I feel is a step in the right direction. We'll have to see more detail.
No, it definitely is.
Sorry, and just on that, I may just add that about the pool, it wasn't until we all were there together and saw it in person that we could all understand what we were talking about. And from the owner's perspective, they just see a pool and they're like, we could bring that back. They didn't realize that there's a wetland behind it. And so that's where I, we just received their comments today and we've already spoken about that we're willing to reduce it and move it at an expense of a lot of demolition of what's existing to move it away from the wetland if that is what is helpful for the whole application. So that's where we're trying to make decisions quickly that, yeah, help all the wetlands and the project as well. I don't know if it's, it's in the memos, whether you've read it already, but the last comments also with the sauna and the hot tub in that area, we've taken that away and we've absorbed it into the footprint of the house as existing. So we reorganized the interior to take those away from that site. So we're trying to reduce as much as we can from, from the, the wetlands.
Okay, then we're going to make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the property at 137 Colsheer Court for 12/11/25. I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just, obviously, it all has to be noticed and. 12/11 would be the meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Wonderful. All right. Well, thank you very much, we appreciate your time. Have a great Thanksgiving.
Okay, Prestige Petroleum.
My name is Peter Scottmore, saying Prestige Petroleum at 253 Route 52. The site was purchased by my client. It basically contains an automobile repair shop and a canopy servicing gasoline. It's been there for about, about 15 years. My client basically manages other facilities and they're not in the automobile repair business. So what we did is we went to a pre-application meeting with the town tenant and we were referred to the ZBA to review an interpretation under your special permit requirement 7721(c). And we presented to the ZBA the fact that this could be considered a motor vehicle service center as long as within our retail component, which we will convert from the existing automobile use. As long as we sell motor vehicle minor accessories, this would be considered applicable to the issuance of a special permit and allows us to service and provide gasoline where existing canopy and pumps and also have this portion of the 2,450 square foot building converted to that of a convenience store. And so basically, we presented to you a couple of things, photographs of the building it looks like and be candid with you, some disrepair when they purchased it and somewhat not properly maintained. The intent of my client is to remodel this and remove a lot of pre-existing issues such as gas needs, various storage facilities within the building itself where the load returns, the dumpster, there's all mirror things that were taking place with that automobile use. We should remove that from the building itself and again, complete a new facade in the building. We showed a block, we checked with the department. We would delete the existing offices and restroom facilities that are there in the building itself. Clean all air in the interior, remove concrete slabs and look for issues with oil seepage through the slabs, the slabs are hazardous and again, extremely disrepair. And so we would be going into the building itself and we would do some basic analysis for those to leave, mitigate that within the confines of the building. And when we get to the site, kind of nice. Now, to function as a convenience store, there's a lot of regulations. We currently have seven variants on the property which were issued for the automotive use and they're in the pathway extension. But we need a waiver from the planning board required parking. Because basically, on the site right now, there's no parking, it's haphazard and there's all sorts of vehicular lane action going on in the pumps. Whoever drives in one certain direction wins the, the alignment battle. So we would be creating an entrance in, entrance out through the facility. We'd get any parking out of the area of these travel lanes and we'd be proposing five parking spaces on the, let's see, on the eastern side of the property. We'd have a handicap space, which is not there now as well. We'd be giving you a handicap space and three spaces on the east side. And the employee space would be accessed by driving through a restricted handicap aisle, but you'd be parking beyond the aisle, so we would not be encroaching upon the handicap component. So it's kind of a win-win for the site. And we basically would be taking care of everything that's invaluable at the point of time. But one thing would remain is all the signage, the gas needs remain. That is the sales prices, et cetera, which are counted on the pumps. The only thing we would like to do on the signage is if this project keeps moving forward smoothly, we are moving toward a, some established commercial convenience store operators which would be running the facility and we would talk about some signage with that. And also, we have color schemes that we are looking at now which are basically based on the more typical designs for these certain operators or convenience stores. We can present that to you the next meeting. So currently, this is the concept before you. We gave you a very comprehensive statement of use which describes all this legal components and without all the variants that are required and the waiver that we need from you required parking. The big issue we have with the, with the convenience store is we show you two options in terms of signage. We only present that because the building happens to have a kick in it, it's not straight across the front. And so what our intent is, is currently there's a mansion roof on the front of the house of the building itself. A mansion roof is a fake pitch roof. And we'd like to make that into a straight facade along the front of the building itself. With the application of the sign, and I use the word food line because the user is going to be, we'll submit to you a proper sign application once I've ironed out the end user. But we have two types of signs related to housing. One, option, two, standard sign, sort of bisecting across the camp of the building and the front facade. We have another sign which is advised to the eastern side of this facade. There are candidities that exist on the building itself and our facade we're proposing would keep those candidities outward as a horizontal element. And we push back these mansards to a position on the building itself. Currently, we have all these projections along the front of the building. We want to clean all that up. And we gave you the pictures of what it looks like right now in our submission. So you can have a nice clean building when we're done, homogeneous coloring, you know, eliminating the mansard which a district manager anyway had thought on the building. And then we would just clean up, you know, the front of the side. Well, what we plan on doing is we're going to try and fix up the asphalt because there's, there's an interplay between concrete covers and asphalt right now which vary across the site. You'd be repaving it, cleaning up the pavement as well, and put actual striping into parking which we're defining on site plans to sort of make it a more inviting and, and again, clean up the site.
I do have a question, the existing. Yeah, no, that's, I'm looking at it here. On your photographs, which is the fourth one along to the right, that one, and then the next one down on the left-hand side.
Right here?
Nope, down, and keep going over to your left, the far left.
Yeah, right here, yeah.
First one, nope, nope, the first one, first one. Keep going, keep going, that one! Those two photographs, to me, from looking at this, show there's encroachment to the north and the west into other properties. Is that, am I correct?
We'd be eliminating those, if someone put gravel on there.
Yeah, there's gravel and also usage of the property next door and to the west of it as well, right?
Yeah, we're cleaning all that. Our intent is to, is to remove gravel, clean the back of the building. The only thing that would remain there would be a kerosene tank, which we would like to continue.
Yeah, well, yeah, you have the room for that, but I was just looking from the plans.
And so it would remain, again, we would grass this back area, that old lawn. We can stop all our improvements at this location and show, this becomes all planned and organized. There is kind of a wet area which is off our property. It's owned by the Mid Hudson Savings Bank, I guess. And in that area, there is a, well, it's basically the trapped water. What happened is beyond our site, it was low ground and then rose up to a building that was built for pine mowers. And it has, there's some sort of water trapping in there, we're not touching that at all, but it is in the, on the neighboring property. So what we're doing is we'd be giving that a buffer on our property with improvements we propose by eliminating all the gravel and secondary uses in the back of the building.
Okay, I have one more question just right now. The, the use that you're saying for the building right now, how many parking spots do they require?
Oh, well, if you go by the regulations.
That's what I'm talking about, by regulations.
Parking space is 30 beds.
Forty-five?
Yeah, if you look at the square footage divided by required parking and your rents, it's like 45. But what's interesting about that is we don't have, we wouldn't have that much customer space because we have, we're putting a freezer area, storage area, which people can't enter. And so we have all these aisles of racks, you know, display racks for a convenience store. And so that really, we, we have the offices here in the bathroom, there's only one employee. So basically, awareness is taking a gross area of building, but we have a small building which is basically in cover with our basic approvals.
All right, so it requires 45 and you're given, you're looking for eight?
Yeah.
What about a delivery area, where does that?
I have one, it's on the site line. It's showing on the right side, we have a delivery area over there, this one called, the whole area for delivery, it's beyond the entranceway.
Is that where, is that the first two parking spots that are on that?
Well, there's a parking spot here, but our deliveries can be easily pulled apart and a vehicle can here for deliveries and it's still the same.
And the property to the north, you said was an easement, is that correct? The property to the north, you said that was an easement?
No.
No? Right.
That's to the west. That's to the west.
This is Hudson, now the Savings Bank, it's a parking lot, a big parking lot.
But it looks like the, your, your furthest parking spot encroaches on that, no?
Oh, well, they did encroach on it, but not, we're not. But we're, but everything's going off our property. There's an encroaching right there for the server and this one called, that's, that's being removed. That's, that's being removed.
I don't see what you're saying. The fifth parking spot, it looks like it's partially out of the property.
Yeah.
Looks like it's partially out of it. All right, gentlemen. Let's go first.
So as Peter alluded to, this is the first opportunity that we've had to review this. There was a meeting on Zoom with the applicant, and the applicant did indeed go to the Bill Walters, who then referred them to the zoning board of appeals for an interpretation. That interpretation came back that the applicant could proceed under the auspices of a special use permit to be granted by this board. I'll talk very briefly about the parking. John's going to talk a little bit more. Basically, the waiver itself is not only the number of parking spaces, but also the fact that in that particular zone, the parking at the front of the building, it needs a waiver, as does the fact that there's a loading area at the front of the building, too. In general, from a planning perspective, what I would like to have a look at is how the flow will work on the site in terms of parking and gasoline delivery and loading dock, to ensure that there's pedestrian safety. I want to make sure people can get out of their cars, go into the store, come back, while all that activity is going on where people are getting gas and what have you. So that's something I'd like to see pedestrian pathways, turning radiuses on vehicles, et cetera, to see how this all could work, which I think would be helpful for the board if they do indeed will consider a variance in the number of parking. I think we need to take a look at how that's going to all work. There's several items that, you know, again, this is the first kind of blush at this, but there is an identified wetland and activities in the wetland buffer. John and I will be going out to the site to have a look at it at some opportunity, perhaps next week. There's also a hit from the DEC regarding hazardous material or waste on the property. I don't know if there's a spill number or not, that was not given to us. The applicant also indicates in their plans they'll be capping the floor with the garages, but now I understand it's going to be removed in a phase one and perhaps a phase two done. All good, it's an old gas station. We also don't know enough, a lot of information about the existing underground gas tanks, how old they are, if they've been inspected, if they have been considered up to snuff. There is a mention of a stormwater management system, but there's no information provided on the stormwater management. And the same thing holds true with the septic system, not a lot of information on that as well. So, you know, there are, as is almost always the case with the first review, a lot of Ts to cross and Is to dot, but those are basically the substantive elements that we need to start to work through, is we got to look at the site and start to whittle down some of these questions that we have in our mouths. Any questions for me? John?
So, I have the unpleasant task of walking you through parking, because Mr. Scott, in his presentation, used for the parking determination, a quick service establishment, which requires one parking space per fifty square feet. That's how he got to his forty-five. I think it actually calculates out to forty-nine spaces. But regardless, there is no definition of a quick service establishment in your code. If you were to do the proverbial Google, a quick service establishment is also known as a fast food restaurant. So I don't think it really fits. Number two, originally, it was parked, it was supposed to be parked as a gas station in our commercial garage. That's one space per hundred square feet. It was, it came out to twenty-four. If you look on the history of the variances, they got a variance to park it at ten spaces. Okay, that's in the record. If you look further in your code, a retail sales facility, because let's face it, what they're doing is the outside's the gas station, the inside's going to be a retail sales facility. The parking is twelve point, is one per two hundred square feet, which reduces it down to about twelve point five. They are providing eight. Okay? Now, a couple things you have to know. Your code, if the use doesn't specifically fit in your categories, allows the planning board, the latitude, to decide the number of required parking on a site. I'm going to submit to you that the actual required parking, and I think I'm in keeping with what Mr. Scott said, is somewhat less than forty-five spaces. Let's be realistic. It's probably down around between twelve and twenty spaces, one would think, for a use like this. Unfortunately, your code does not permit you to waive the number. The way your code is written, it allows you to waive parking spaces, providing the applicant can demonstrate that those parking spaces can be situated on the site. I don't think he has the ability to do that, so you have no waiver. When you finally decide on a number, it appears as though you're going to need to go back for a variance. Because if you look at the history of variances, the variance was granted, the ten to, the twenty-four to ten was granted for a, the previous use, the gas station with a repair garage. The variance is typically run with the land, but when the use changes, variances are often seen as tied to a specific use. So if this was going from a commercial repair garage to a commercial repair garage, it would still hold, but it's not. So I think at the end of the day, you're going to need to determine what's a reasonable number of spaces, taking well into account Bruce's and my concern about pedestrian safety, and they may need to go back for a variance. Now, there's another hook here. Your code does not address parking at gas pumps. I think there are four spaces at the pumps on this site. I've never been to the site, I will confess. But typically, some codes allow pump locations to be considered parking spaces. Other codes, and it typically allow one parking for every two pump locations, that being so that you got two cars there, car A decides to go into the mart, the other car can get out and around, and so you're using it as one parking space. That's something you need to take into your consideration. But I think the matter of parking is fairly complicated here. And I haven't even addressed the loading zone. Oftentimes, you do, for instance, they're double stacking, they have the employee parking in the back behind the handicap. That's not an uncommon practice, particularly at old gas stations. So I'm not adverse to that. But we are going to have to do, and I would suggest that Mr. Scott's going to have to do, a pretty detailed analysis of what's the real number of parking here and whether or not they can achieve it. To echo what Bruce has said, there's a number of substantial issues. Stormwater management, we have no grades out there. And I think the biggest thing for me is, and I don't understand it, the information is kind of contradictory, there's a canopy there. And it appears as though a portion of the canopy intrudes into the DOT right-of-way by about four point two feet. But I'm not sure what that, if that's truly the case or not. But there seems to be some overlap between DOT and this site. There's some overlap between maneuvering areas and the DOT right-of-way. You've highlighted some discrepancies with the adjoining property. This is the proverbial, a lot of stuff in a very small bag. And I think it's going to take some time to sort this all out.
I thought you just mentioned one thing, you know, while we're speaking about the variances, we did get a variance, well, the previous applicant did, which allows parking in the front yard. I know it's not tied into this use, but there is a variance on the property that allows parking in front. So we can, I just wanted to bring that up.
Very good. One of the things, listening to John and reading through the documents, the board might want to consider is directing the applicant to at least look at the feasibility of shared parking with an adjoining neighbor. I don't know if that's even plausible, I don't know how that will be laid out, but certainly it's something that if there's excess parking on one spot and not enough on another spot, is something that the board may direct the applicant to at least look into feasibility, which might open up this project quite a bit if it's possible.
Unless you already did it, Peter.
We already started that.
There you go.
No problem. So, yeah, we'd like to have a site walk and show them, you know, what's happening there. And basically, again, the goal of my client is to make it more conforming and to eliminate a lot of the sins that took place on the property. And it will require, you know, removal of certain areas, and everything has to be cleaned up. I mean, it's pretty much, we were surprised by some of the survey information we came up with when we went to the site ourselves. So that's the first phase of that. One thing I could do is I could do a analysis of similar uses in the area. We've done on-the-border gasoline convenience store type operations. We could look into what their traffic and parking counts are relative to some sort of daily schedule, we could, if that might be entertained, or we can give you some historical data from other similar uses, where there's something called the shared parking analysis programs, which basically could tell you what these analytical data has come up in the past for other locations, at least provide you a starting point for some other, you know, similar uses. We could try that.
Peter, do you know if they intend to keep it as a full-service station?
Uh, no, it'll be no servicing of vehicles whatsoever.
No, 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 because it's, you mean full service for gas?
Full service, meaning there's an attendant out there pumping gas in their car, so even there's a line out there for that reason, same price.
I think they are currently considering to keep that going at the site.
So you would need two employee parking spaces then? If there's an attendant and someone who's at the register, presumably?
Okay.
You would likely require two spaces, so.
Okay, no car pulling in. But, so, yeah, I mean, I think, I think they're, the opinion that having the attendant there helps manage how people operate in the area.
Like air traffic control?
Yeah, pretty much.
Because it's chaos over there in the morning rush. There's cars going down fifty-two, there's probably ten cars on deck.
Yeah, what we're going to do is we're going to work on the signage component and force certain entries into the property, make it one-way. That's the first thing we're doing, to enter the pumps in a one-way direction. That's what we're working on now, so.
Yes.
Now, there's an old problem about how do you weave to which side your gasoline, the opening is on your car, but I think we could address that in some manner.
Okay.
I mean, listening to Mr. Scott, I think it would be helpful, I think we do have to solve the parking issue first before we look at anything else. I think what he suggests would be helpful, in other words, because your code does give you the ability to set a number of parking spaces. The more documentation you have, that would point you to a reasonable number and then see what actually we can fit on the site. And then, you know, if push comes to shove, you may have to go with variance for that. But I would suggest to you that, right now, until this, how you figure out how this site is going to work parking-wise, it doesn't seem reasonable to spend a lot of time doing other stuff. So I would, I would suggest the board seriously consider Mr. Scott's request and authorize him to prepare that information and make a case for what he believes is appropriate. Yeah, oh, we're still, Peter, relax.
Now, we have a four-minute exam tomorrow to go by. We'll get it next week.
Okay.
We'll let you know.
Very good, thank you.
Peter, would you be able to show where the gas pumps are in a future submission? The actual location of the pumps?
Yeah, we know where they are, and they've been inspected before the purchase took place.
I'm just curious if we're thinking if.
Pumps are here.
Right.
The tanks are over here.
I mean, if you actually put them on the drawing.
Okay, sure.
And then, because if there's, if we're considering using them as parking spaces, we want to know where they are specifically.
And you just said the tanks are under the other five parking spots?
Yeah, the tanks are over here.
Okay.
And the pumps are here. And we'll give you all the definitions. We have this big service thing.
That's directly related. If it's a full-service station, meaning they're pumping gas, you can't consider those parking spots.
No, you can't. That's, that's.
Where you can't leave your car.
No, if there's an attendant there, then.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think there's.
They're tied together.
There's a lot of information we don't have.
Okay. The tanks, I would be all in, we'll grant it, we'll get it for that. Well, what we do is we, another facilities we work with, we have the tanks coming off P-Cars.
Yeah.
No, I don't think he's talking about the tanks. He's just saying that the attendant for doing, you can't consider that.
You can't park a car there and have ten cars waiting.
Waiting to get in. And count it as a parking spot, he's saying.
That's why, that's why we plan is if you push everything off to the east, we let the whole core open because of that circulation issue.
Is this going to be twenty-four hours?
No. The hours around the, my statement of use, I can't remember exactly, but it's like six to five, or six to six. Okay. Thank you very much, everyone, and we will prepare the submission.
See, at six o'clock?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
You'll be before you get home later, you'll never be a customer there now.
Good evening, Clinton Livingston, representative for Choco Berries. I have some, that's for you, three.
Wait, you didn't bring us samples of the.
I guess I am going to have to come back. That's one, two, three.
Thank you.
For you, two. And three. I don't know. I want to have the, measure this on it. You get it. All right, so at our work session on the sixth of November, I was asked to provide measurements for the sign that goes over the front door, and it is twelve inches high by forty-eight inch, forty-seven and a half inches wide. In keeping with the other signs above the other doors in this plaza. The water usage is, as demonstrated by the engineer, less water usage than the previous daycare that was on the site. If you add up the usage from the nail salon of two-hundred-and-fifty gallons per day and the proposed water usage in this of one-hundred-and-sixty gallons per day, which was in the report that I submitted last week, it's a total of four-hundred-and-ten gallons, is previously five-hundred-and-fifty-five gallons of water sewage usage. So I'm here to get approval for the sign and approval for the change of use. Any questions?
This is an application for change in use, as well as a sign at 531 Route 52, it's unit number five, formerly Bliss Nail Center and Nail Spa. As we all know, it's requested us to convert that or the change of use to a chocolate berry confectionery, as well as making small baked goods, according to the statement of use provided by the applicant. Mr. Walters and I have reviewed the application. The sign does meet zoning requirements, as well as they have provided a wastewater calculation, which is subject to Bill and John's review. At this time, I don't see any reason why we cannot recommend to the board that this be addressed as a de minimis application and be sent to the building inspector for building permits. Any questions?
No. That's just for the sign?
Sign and a change of use.
And change of use?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have a question? No, good. Okay. So we just have to make a simple motion? I want to make a motion to move this to a de minimis, sorry, a de minimis operation for the sign and also the change of use at 531 Route 52 in the town of Kent. Who would like to make the motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Jim Smith Fitness. I think it's an escrow refund.
This is also a sign application a while back. Mr. Smith has requested the return of the remaining escrow amount. How much do we have left?
Um, I forget, I'm sorry.
It was there. Hold on.
I think it's 750.
Well, no, I think the original application was...
No, it was 750, but there was something...
Minus fees incurred to date. So if the board is willing, what you could say this evening is that you authorize the return of the escrow of remaining fees once all invoices are satisfied.
Okay.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to, we have sent this to the town board anyway, for the return...
Yes.
Of the escrow for the property at 1397 Route 52, Jim Smith Fitness, in the amount of 750 minus anything that is owed in invoices and that is deemed current.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Before we get just to the next one, I just want to inform anybody that's here, it's solely to do with the balloon test. Okay?
Good evening. My name is David Kenny, attorney with Snyder Snyder. Here with me tonight is regional manager of Homeland Towers, Vincent Xavier. As the chairman just stated, the discussion tonight is purely on the balloon test. Received some comments at the September session, and part of those comments were regarding the balloon test that was previously done earlier this year. Homeland Towers has offered to float a second balloon test to cure some of those comments and to respond to those comments. So we would just like to discuss the methodology of the balloon test. Since some of the comments were about specific details about how the last balloon test was done, we want to make sure that we iron out those details now and we get them right this time.
Good.
And other than that, any other questions regarding the application we're here tonight to answer?
As indicated, this particular discussion tonight is just for the balloon test solely. The applicant has an application into the board regarding the tower in general, but that is not for tonight's discussion, just the balloon test. In reviewing the prior visual assessment and the methodology that was done, there were several things that came up that in talking with John and Sarah and the board, we'd like to at least have the applicant consider, in essence, as Mr. Kenny just said, to get it right this time. Okay? So I'm gonna read these off for the record, not that this is holding anybody to anything, but it just was some ideas that we felt the board might want to consider. With respect to the balloon test, number one is the cell tower consultant that is employed by the town should review one more time and confirm the appropriate balloon heights based upon his review of complete coverage materials. Mr. Smith, Clint Smith, is the consultant mentioned, as indicated, he perhaps needs some more information on the coverage maps, so that's certainly his purview. Number two is review of the viewpoints that were originally conducted as well as any additional viewpoints that this board feels is appropriate. And that might include areas from residential properties. It might include the actual Teconic Parkway looking up at the cell tower location itself. But initially, what happened is that the applicant, in the November 2024 approving resolution, was instructed to determine the most advantageous viewpoints, which in their opinion, I suspect they did, but this is an opportunity for the board to consider, based upon the visual assessment, if additional viewpoints should be encompassed in this particular balloon test. As Mr. Kenny indicated, we'd like just the complete written methodology of the visual assessment, how it be conducted. The planning board may, may choose to have a public hearing regarding the balloon test if they so determine it to be required based upon legal counsel. On the day of the balloon test, it may be desirable for a member or members of the planning board to witness the photographs taken by the consultants and ensure that they were done by the vantage points that you had wished them to be done by. One of the things that came up last time is the notification of 500 feet from the property. We are hopeful that the notification will extend 500 feet from the property perimeter. Last time, it was from the center of the property. There's some questions about proper noticing. The applicant should provide a 14-day notice and provide a photograph of the sign that's placed at a visual area from the road so people can see that sign. Last time around, I think it actually blew over or something, and there were some issues about the sign placed properly. It's also suggested that the balloon test be conducted four hours over a two-day period of Friday or Saturday, or Sunday or Monday, to ensure that people that work will see it on Saturday, people that are away on Saturday might see it on Friday, provide a great opportunity for it to be seen. Upon completion of the amended visual assessment, it shall be submitted to the board, what are the results of what happened out there. And lastly, the planning board, upon review of the assessment, may refer that report and the appraiser report submitted by the applicant for review by an independent third-party appraiser for review and comment. So in no particular order, those are the kind of bullets that came up for discussion purposes for this evening. Any questions?
If we could just respond to a couple of them. Regarding the height of the cell tower, we understand the cell tower consultant had a comment, "We've reduced the tower height to 130." Cell tower consultant discussed at the wireless plan, discussed of a 125 height. That's for the antenna centerline height. So the wireless master plan reviewed coverage maps in this area at 125-foot centerline height for the antennas. Antenna centerline height would, again, extend above to probably 130-foot tower. So this consultant's comment was, "Why is the additional five feet needed here if we're reducing the tower height to 130?" But the wireless plan discussed 125 feet. I think that's a misreading of the wireless plan because the 125 feet was the centerline height of the antennas. Here, with 130 foot to the top of the steel of the tower, we are meeting that same height that was reviewed in the 2011 wireless plan. So I do believe the information regarding the height has been submitted. Regarding methodology, we did have a methodology letter previously submitted. The most of the majority of the methodology, I believe, was approved by this board and is dictated by the code. We're willing to comply with all of that. The two comments we got on the last balloon test was the balloon sizes. So we had two different balloons, and they were supposed to be the same size, but instead they were two different sizes. And then the two balloons were supposed to be of different colors, but they were the same color. Here, we're proposing one balloon, 130 feet, so those issues aren't really present in this second go-around. So regarding the comments of a methodology letter, we would just ask that the prior methodology be approved regarding the fact that we're going for one balloon. We don't have those issues of two different colors or two different sizes. We're more than welcome to make sure that people attend. We can extend the notice radius. Again, the notice list we got last time was from the town, so we're happy to comply with whatever list. We just use the list that's provided to us. A two-day float may be a problem because the weather, as you may recall, in the last time, pushed out from an early February noticing all the way to April. To kind of make sure that the weather is good for two days in a row, that's gonna be a very problematic issue. So what if we get the balloon floated on a Friday, and then the second day was supposed to be a Saturday, and now we're delaying it for a few weeks? This is already a second balloon test, so there wasn't an opportunity to review a balloon test the first time around. We will notice it, we'll make sure we comply with the town code. But the town code does speak to a one-day balloon test. Again, it speaks to a specific time period of one day. We can discuss things we can do to better notice it to the public. We're more than willing to do that. I just think that there might be a logical dilemma or impossibility if we have weather issues and you can float on one day but not the second day, and then when do we get that second day done?
If I may? Sure. Thanks, Bruce. Some of these requests are pretty unusual compared to other municipalities and not standard, but I want to comply with them all, and I want to give you what you want. So, yes, we're only flying one balloon here this time, so the methodology is pretty straightforward. It'll be, the top of the balloon will be 130 feet. It'll be a red balloon, it'll be three feet wide. As far as the viewpoints, any viewpoints? You can look at the VRA we've already provided. If you feel we've missed any viewpoints, tell me where you want a viewpoint taken from, and I'll make sure it's done. As far as residential properties, I will not go into any homes to take photos, but if there's a specific member of the public who wants photos taken from their property, we're willing to do that as long as they're willing to sign this entry and testing agreement and have a representative from the town with us on the property at that time. You know, even if you told me the day before, I can bring the paper that day and just have Bruce or somebody with me, yes, I will go on any property that they want me to take that viewpoint. And like I said, if there's any viewpoints you think we are already missing from the previous one, let me know, and we'll go back to that as well. As far as the property owner list, I did use the Putnam County, they have this new Beacon GIS system. And when I go in their new system, I brought up this property and I asked for the 500-foot property list, and I have it here. And it is significantly longer than the one that was previously provided to us by the town. I'll have my attorney submit that to you for review. We'll send certified mailings to all of these new ones. If there's some that are on the cusp and you want us to send them to that too, even if they're outside the 500 feet, I'll do that as well. Come back to my list. 14-day notice is fine. I would propose we fly this for a preliminary date of December 6th, which would mean I would have to get the notices out by November 21st, which we can accomplish, and it'll give us time to conduct the float with some buffer days for weather and still get this done by Christmas so that we can be back before you in January, ideally with a public hearing, or at least in December discussing setting the public hearing in January, if we're able to accomplish this by December 6th. So with your blessing, that's what I would like to move forward towards, December 6th. The two-day test, it is complicated to get two days in a row. I kind of wish we started a public hearing sooner. I know they're having members of the public here. If, you know, December 6th doesn't work, especially for the members that are here, you know, I'll fly the balloon myself for a member of the public who missed it and wants to see it that day. You know, the goal of us being here is not to try to, you know, pull something and to make sure people don't see it. We want everybody to see this. I think this is a great application. I want people to see this balloon float. I want to make sure you can attend. Anything I can do to make that happen so that you have all the information so that we can just get to the point where we're making decisions is better for me, and I want to facilitate that however I can. So it's not in the code, and I don't want to commit to a two-day float, but if there is a specific parties who have been here who, it doesn't work December 6th, on two hours' notice, I can show up with a helium tank and fly this balloon myself. I may not have my consultant with me taking special photographs, but I can get the balloon in the air so that the public or any members of this board who want to see, make sure they see the balloon, I can do a custom balloon float just for you. We don't have to worry about notice requirements there, to be specific for an intended purpose. And appraisal review, you know, I don't know if that's required in the code for the independent third-party. It seems like it's just more fees I'll have to pay in escrow. I'll let my attorney handle that, but if that's something, you know, so be it. Basically, I want to comply with you, Bruce, and do whatever you need here. All right, thank you.
So at this time, I think what would the pleasure of the board be? Because basically, we have now a lot of verbal feedback from the applicant, which is great, except that it would be desirable to have that in writing. The next meeting again is on December 11th. So it may be prudent, if the board wishes to get everything in writing, consider it on the meeting at the 11th. Couple things to iron out in terms of the code. I didn't go to law school. I believe the code says eight hours. I'm gonna defer that to our esteemed attorney and the one behind me. In addition, there are maybe some additional components the board would like to bring into this that is not on this list. So I think my recommendation would be is to give the applicant a response, to digest the memo, come back for the meeting on the 11th, have the board take a look at that, see if everything is satisfied as far as you're concerned. Sarah will have an opportunity to look at the code in terms of the specifics of these requests, and we can move forward. Recommendation.
With respect, I think we're overcomplicating this. I'm flying a balloon in the air. I don't think we need to wait another month, come back for a meeting, see if you agree with the color then, and then wait another month, and now we're Christmas, so that's going, so now we're in January. We lost last month's meeting. My goal is to provide the information. I can't even fully complete the application, which technically, the application is complete right now, whether there's comments in the previous VRA or not, it is a complete application. I really don't understand the need to drag this out to more consultant memos, to discuss this in another meeting. It's a 130-foot tower proposing, and we're just gonna fly a balloon at that location. You know, I'm not trying to be difficult, but with respect, we don't gotta drag this out.
I'll just point out the obvious is the last time you said you were gonna do something, you didn't do it. So to get something in written response is not a far thing to ask for.
It was a wrong color balloon, though. I apologize for that.
Well, it's not even that. It was that your notice that it was supposed to be on the outside, nobody kept an eye on it, it blew in the back or whatever.
The sign fell over, yes.
You know, there was a lot of little discrepancies in there.
There was some questions about methodology and what happened, and we're aware of that. You know, again, I don't think anybody wants to drag this out. This is a leaf-off requirement, which we have until, let's say, April 1st. It's now middle of November. So I think there's an opportunity to get the balloon test done. I think that echoing what David Kenny said, everybody wants to get this right this time. And in retrospect, it wasn't done properly the last time. There were some glitches and some things. Even with the revision that was sent, it didn't have a revision date on it, but it had some text changes. So that was also something that came up as well. So my, the board can certainly address this as you wish. Obviously, I think that this is information perhaps new to several of the board members, these requirements or suggestions we're talking about. And I think that to get this really vetted out in December, it gives the opportunity for the applicant to do it over another four months. Concurrent, they can run a parallel track and start working on the technical memo and get that back to the board, which I think at present is related as an incomplete memo and not complete. And the shot clock is told, if I'm not mistaken, David, correct?
Uh, no, you're incorrect.
Oh, good. Let me sit down then.
So I know we've been talking about incomplete, but previously, there was a comment about variances on the application, whether or not the application should be incomplete until the variances are obtained. So we entered into a tolling agreement until the zoning board application is filed. So even though there's comments about being incomplete and complete, the shot clock has been told based on an agreement. So the shot clock's not running, but distinction.
I'm half right there.
But we are gonna be filing with the ZBA tomorrow, and we will provide comment, response to the comments that you received so far next week.
Good.
We just need just to fly the balloon in order to complete this and move forward.
Well, just so I can jump in here. If we can finalize in writing what the board is requiring from you for this balloon test and then cut you loose potentially once you have those directives, I think that's gonna make it clear for everyone involved what needs to be done.
Agreed. I think my client's point is that the two distinctions that were being made about why the last balloon test had comments aren't even gonna be presented here because we're gonna go one balloon versus two balloons. The comments regarding the sign being affixed, again, there were photos, the sign was affixed. I'm not sure how it came off. It was with wire cabled to the tree, so I'm not sure a wind actually blew it off. I don't know how it came off.
I don't know.
But I'm just trying to say, the applicant made sure to do everything right the first time. The notice list was obtained from the town. We're just making the point that the methodology that's being discussed was already submitted. It seems like what we're asking for now is to write in a letter that was already submitted and approved by this board, and the two details that were at question last time are not present with this new submission. So I think my client's point is, is what are we being asked to submit, the methodology that we submitted last time? What is really needed to be put into a letter and to writing?
I mean, I'll defer on methodology to John and Bruce, but as far as, you know, now that they've had an opportunity to look at the first visual analysis, you know, the board may want to consider additional viewpoints. You know, the notice needs to be redone. So, you know, as far as specific methodology, that's beyond my expertise, but...
I think weaving these talking points tonight into the amended visual methodology ensures when everybody's on the same page. The viewpoints, if the board wants to add viewpoints, which is a paradox, I don't know how you do that between now and the December meeting because you don't have any opportunity to meet yet. So it's in there for this board, but I think that there's some loose ends. No one's looking to put drag on this. I think, again, we just want to get it right this time.
Agreed. Just to add to, make it easier to add viewpoints, I don't believe they need to, as a board, add the viewpoints. Any individual board member can send an email to Vera, and that can be sent to us for additional viewpoints. I think we would take viewpoints from staff, from the public. I don't think... I don't think there needs to be an official action to add a viewpoint, we just want the additional information.
Do I have a question?
It sounds like they're willing to do more viewpoints than less, so...
But I haven't decided, I mean, is that okay with you guys? If you want to know if the viewpoints are appropriate, then get them back to the board.
And then maybe we can consolidate that for the applicant for next month?
Well, I have a different question, what's the downside of setting it up for December 6th?
I think that time tonight, we're seeing these viewpoints now, and we have a lot of great verbal information. Some of these board members cannot totally adjust over this, and I think that getting it right in the Saturday, the two, one is important. Number two, Clint Smith, I think needs to weigh in on the fact that his coverage maps are adequate to ensure the balloon test is adequate at 130, which I have seen from Mr. Smith. You know, there's some odd meanings that if it can be tied up, I don't know.
I mean, we can schedule it, and if they don't meet these commitments, we can scrap it. Put the burden on them to, you know...
Okay, and sorry, you, the whole thing, you're requesting...
Whatever we think we need to make this a success, if they don't provide...
I guess my concern there is that we're not being clear on what the board is requiring the applicant to do. And you're not going to be needing before the 6th, if you need to change it.
What topics are we not being clear? We can just ask if people want different viewpoints now, and are there any other open topics that we can discuss?
Well, you're not going to do, everybody's not going to do the viewpoints now because...
I'm sorry, say it again.
Viewpoints now, because you'd have to go out and see.
Can I ask a stupid question? What's the material difference between December 6th and December 13th?
If... No, it's not a dumb question, no, that's fine, it's just you're assuming December 13th because it's after the December 11th meeting. If I wait till December 11th for you to tell me it's okay to move forward...
Not to get you, what I'm suggesting is that you operate as if it is going to occur on the 13th. You back your 14 days out, you make all your notices, you make all your provisions. We have everything in hand so that the day you do the test on the 13th, this board has signed off on it. And all the objections, because we'll do everything between now and the meeting on the 11th.
That works.
We wouldn't do it in a vacuum, we'd do it with your participation, but that gets us all some breathing room to do this, and it's, I'm sorry, I'm, it's just...
That's not stupid, that's a great solution as far as I'm concerned. Yes.
It allows the board some time to digest this stuff, get it in writing, I don't think the material impacts. So if we can all agree on that, I don't see a problem with December 13th.
I would accept that, because really, my concern is the lead time for the notice. So allowing me to do the notice now saves us that time as opposed to deciding on the 11th and doing notice, so I would absolutely be amenable to that.
The notice on December 11th would be for December 25th, that's why we were looking for it.
No, no, I, any other applicant, what we have, these types of people do, is provide written comments to what's in front of you right now, which can be reviewed at the meeting. You could start the notice in prior to your, at your peril, but you could still start it in advance in the hopes that the board would be okay, there's consensus when you move on.
Plus it gives you more time to notify everybody.
Sure.
So we know when to complain and say they're not notifying.
A point that you just brought up before is just, you don't need to get it up, but just for, I know you guys have been following this, December 13th work for you?
I'm sure it won't, I'm also going to have to...
I'm just saying for yourself because you're always here. I know you can't speak for everybody, but I'm talking about yourself.
We are a community, we have the 70-plus people on the position, they get the power to move on.
But I think it's useful to go the 13th because it gets everything together, we get to meet on the 11th.
An additional seven days after your meeting, and, you know, if these gentlemen are correcting what they're saying, if we don't come up with many major things, like change the balloon to hot pink, if we bring them an additional comment on the 11th, they can reasonably accommodate it for their flight date. What they don't want to do is have to extend it out, because to be blunt with you, you're getting any longer than December 13th, everybody's going for Christmas, and then we'll get the flawed Christmas flight. And I don't want, I don't want that either.
The weather is going to get any better.
Exactly.
No, the weather is inconvenient.
I think if we all understand that that's the plan, we'll work to have so that basically the 11th should be a rubber stamp for what you're proposing, and we'll go from there, and if there's any modifications, you've got, you know...
No, I think this is a great solution and we're appreciative.
Does anybody on the board here disagree with the 13th? Let's put it that way. No, I think the 13th looks good.
What about, what about the notices and the difference?
No, the notices will be sent to...
On the 28th.
Two updates, you can provide something in writing, address those points to Vera by 20th of November, by the end of the meeting. At that time, you may choose to do the notice in advance if you so desire. At the meeting, the board will review the comments, make any adjustments, what have you, and basically then move forward appropriately.
And then they're going to also provide the list of being 500 outside the property line.
Correct.
It's all part of that.
Okay. And we'll get that list immediately so that can be checked upfront, and so we make sure we have the right notice list. And then we'd also offer for additional notice, sometimes, particularly when there is public involvement, if we put something on the town website, I don't know if there's like a town post board or kind of newsletter or a way to post on the town about certain projects, just an offer of just an additional way to get notice for people that may not be within that 500-foot radius but are still paying attention.
So David, you contact the council, you find the documents, okay, and bring to the ID person.
Absolutely.
We didn't mean nothing, you have to do, if there are some issues, we'll take it, we'll get it, we can turn it around.
So, yeah, we absolutely will offer, you know, the comments we're on regarding the driveway, we'll get all of that stuff in a submission to you guys next week.
Okay.
And just real quick on the viewpoints, you know, obviously all the viewpoints are shown on the previous VRA we submitted. So if you literally just individually take that document and just circle another spot you want and individually scan that back, I'll put it all together and I'll make sure we get all those viewpoints.
I think one of the things I got this, last time, and I'll be candid with you, I've been at this site now, I think you were there, the day we were there.
I was.
Wonderful rainy day.
Yeah.
The only gentleman about to stay dry was Mr. Kenny.
The only one who was getting paid to be there, too.
The interesting thing that I noted is you can actually see the tower site itself, or you can actually see the tachonic from where the tower fence and unit would be. So I think one of the things we may ask you to do is simulate the base of the tower to see if you can see it from the tachonic. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to commit to that just yet, I'll drive the area, because it just has to be a safe place for my guy to pull over and take a photo from the tachonic and tachonic's the most dangerous road in New York State. We already have one already? Okay, if he was able to take a photo, then yeah, we'll take a simulation.
But I think you were there, you could see the cars whizzing, you know, whizzing by from the site, so...
At like 80 miles.
It's a little different approach, but if you...
Yeah, no, if we can get a photo from there, absolutely.
But absolutely, we do have photos from the tachonic, and what the visual analysis will do is a photo simulation of the full facility. So if there would be visibility of the base of the facility, it will be present in the photo simulation.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I do appreciate you putting us back in the gentleman's discussion tonight, I do appreciate it.
Thank you, have a good night.
Have a good night. Okay. His turn is to go below the line.
Okay, Chris, thank you.
Who gets the fun for below the line?
Some people, they're going to know the phone.
John, you get it?
Uh, yeah, they're going to send out one. So these are the ones that got that.
Okay, if you can just scan them.
Thank you very much, I'm going to blow the line. Item number one, the Trail Club refund, I don't know what that's all about.
Yeah, we discussed that before, I don't think it actually has anything to do with that.
I don't think it has anything to do with us, I think that's the accounting.
It's the town board.
And the town board, and I think that can come off, Mr. Chair. Laspena, they did make a submission to be on this agenda, however, the submission was woefully incomplete. Their client, Mr. Basrat acknowledged as much and had it pulled from the agenda. We expect to see them next month. Hold on, my fingers aren't working now. Acuba Auto Craft, we're waiting on them, Bill, any word from them?
No word.
Holly Property, they're waiting for DEP and Putnam County Health approval on their septic. Cohen Property, they've kind of disappeared from the radar, they need to make a submittal. Metric Motors, that's in front of the friendly neighborhood judge, am I understanding right?
Correct, and I just got posted on the 17th.
Oh, okay.
Before the holidays, alright.
Could be after the holidays again.
Alright, Moro Equipment, I had a long conversation with Jamie, they have all their approvals but for DOT. And they're in a process of trying to bundle everything up, I had reached out to Sarah, I need some bonds from Sarah. So that's going to be an issue that we need to work through, but one of the reasons they don't have DOT is DOT, just this is an aside, but it's kind of funny, DOT has changed their permitting system, and now they have this wonderful computer program that nobody knows how to run, and nobody knows how to input.
That's right.
And Jamie has reached the same point I've reached on a project, where the last thing to be posted is the bond, and they don't know how to take a bond. So it's crazy, but that looks like it should be getting ready very close to chairman's signature in the very near future. Nichols Road, that's, we're waiting on them. Route 52 Development, I don't know where that is. Repoli, we're waiting on Mr. Lynch. Ryder has disappeared off the face of the earth, but I imagine he's still running his shop. Torres made a submittal, Torres will probably be on next meeting if necessary. And TJ Contracting, we're still waiting to hear from that gentleman.
John, how long do we wait until something comes off? What are the guidelines on that?
Sometimes they've been forever, yeah. But typically what you do, and it's probably been six months, at the end of a six-month period, you usually ask Vera to send them a little tickler and say, can we take you off or are you going to be back?
Okay.
So for instance, on this particular one, you might want to have Vera send out a tickler to Cohen. Nichols Road, Route 52, Repoli, and TJ Contracting. Ryder is, I'm not going to go there.
No, let's not. Thank you.
Who'd like to make the motion to end the meeting?
I'll move.
Two seconds. All in favor?